This conference will now be recorded.
Our flag of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a routine and justice for all. Thank you.
Morning, everybody. It's Tuesday, March 26, 2024. Mitchell County Courthouse for our weekly meeting. It's available by GoToMeeting also. We have a chance to flip over. I'll move to make the agenda. Their motion is our second.
Second.
Motion is second. Home payers say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Prove the minutes of a March 19 meeting and claims. Objections or have a motion to approve them?
Motion.
Your motion to approve is our second.
Our second.
Any other discussion?
Roll call. Todd.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Sidney.
Mike.
Aye.
Right.
County Attorney General Discussion.
I don't really have anything specific this morning. Looks like you've got a lot of other stuff going on. I do have to leave here this damn chair.
There's nothing more. People do that all the time. Anyway, sorry. I got juvenile hearings at nine o'clock. And so I'm gonna head out probably just a few minutes before then. You know, William does a lot of juvenile hearings too, but he... We kind of split up some of that. Plus, he had some where he had a conflict of interest when he was just doing private juvenile stuff before, so... Anyway, I've got a couple I have to handle this morning. One's at nine o'clock, one's at 11:30. I don't think either one ought to take very long, but every time I say that, they do. So anyway, if the meeting's still going on and I get done with my nine o'clock, then I'll probably try and slide back down here. It's still going on, so... Anyway, if anybody has any questions or anything.
Don't think this we're good.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Fair update? I don't think... Fair from the group? Department head discussion.
Yeah, I have a couple things. So last week, we had a zoning commission meeting and we... On the agenda for that was to talk about the amendment to the urban renewal plan. My commission has an answer, so I would like to read a letter on behalf of them, so... I will also be rereading this letter at your guys' public hearing on April 30th. So you guys will hear this again. It's just I wanted to let you know the week after that the meeting happened. Good morning, Board. On Tuesday, March 19, 20.4, the Mitchell County Planning and Zoning Commission held a meeting to discuss various topics. One topic including the recommendation for or against the newest amendment to the urban renewal plan. There was much discussion from the commission regarding this amendment. Topics arose such as how were these entities chosen for funding? Where will this funding money come from? How long will the commitment be to these entities or projects, et cetera? Kathy Showalter was present and answered all questions in regard to this amendment. The commission voted after discussion diminished and the votes were placed as followed. Four ayes, one abstained. With these numbers, on behalf of the Mitchell County Planning and Zoning Commission, I, Amanda Bear, would like to present the recommendation to move forward with the urban renewal plan amendment. The commission would like to thank you for this opportunity to review this amendment, signed and dated March 19, 2024. So I will be reading that again, but I wanted to let you know that they did want to move forward with that amendment. The only other thing that I wanted to let you know, and Erin, since you're in here, a wind ordinance will be given to Erin for review within the next week or so. I'm waiting for a couple items just to hear back from my commission members on little things that I changed besides for the draft that I submitted to them. So I'm waiting to hear back, just so that way they can say, yep, sounds good. Go ahead and send it to Erin. So Erin, that will be being sent to you or dropped off on your desk some point within the next week or so. So I wanted to let you guys know that, that we are... We have a draft and we'll be moving forward on that, so...
Very good. Thank you.
Thanks. Just a reminder, on Monday, we have the truth and taxation meeting at 9:00 a.m. And then we'll be closed at noon on Friday.
Any other department head?
We were talking before the meeting, but this website, are we gonna somehow try to get this handled with Andy?
You didn't get a hold of her last week, Rachel?
I think she got ahold of her, but...
I can get in, but Ryan still needs admin rights.
It's really hard to hold her. I know last time... To get her to communicate with me, so if she won't give Ryan admin rights, maybe we need to have Erin send another email.
You want to talk to her one more time, or?
Scheduled, like a meeting or even, I don't know, but yeah, I'll try.
She works somewhere else and she just sits on the side?
Yeah. Help us be a priority then. We need to try to figure out some other way of... Either something... Entity or, yeah, or just Ryan doing it, or I don't know what we need to do, but it's becoming an issue.
Wait, wait, wait. For a year, I think.
The web hosting is, yeah.
Are we close to a year or...? I guess enough. It's not working.
Yeah. Have to look into what that is.
Perfect. Any other department head?
I got a personal approach. Maybe interested in cleaning up the New Haven property when the time comes. He'll do it by the hour, by the job. He might know what's left. He wants to look at it, see how much metal is there. I just wondered, does the county get a discount if the landfill is...?
No, we don't.
We don't? Okay, okay. That was just a question. So it's Matt Pittson. He's the Mr. Auto guy in Stacyville. He has the equipment. He said he can take down the house, the shed, the... But there'll be some landfill stuff because he said there's one semi trailer full of books.
We'd need a price from him.
Yeah, yeah, he would. When he gets to do that, I feel... He'll put a bid on it hourly or just a bid, he said, whatever. And depending on if we want the house down, I don't know.
I don't know this. It was just a question. Are any scrappers, would they, would they do it just for this metal in it?
And then he's a scrapper too. He'll take appliances at his place in Stacyville. Three, go for anybody. And he'll take any, anything metal, even the drop off. Just get it reset. Yeah, I don't know. We'll have to see what's left.
I just meant if the scrapper, he would be willing to take the metal out just for them to have the...
Just get the metal.
Get the metal, and that would be quite a bit. That's just a thought.
Right, and he said that. We have to see what's left.
Okay.
Enough metal to offset the other, then we can wash.
Yeah.
Anyway, I'll stick you in the line.
Very good.
So I said I...
Perfect. Any other?
Have we come up with a union bid yet?
Come up with what?
At the union? You guys finalized any of that yet? I'm not involved in it, so I don't know. You guys have?
I think it's in their hands now that...
It's waiting for Mark to sign. Not this Mark, Mark Hubbard.
Oh, okay.
And I...
We did our thing just to them.
Okay, good deal.
All righty, next county engineer. Is he online or not?
He's using the law.
You go ahead. Sorry, Mananda. Update from Turnkey Logistics on Summit Urban Pipeline? Good morning.
How's everyone doing today?
Good.
How are you? Good. All right. That's some handouts.
Thank you.
Something always gets my head in the wrong. Oh, sorry. And is there anybody else that would like to see?
I would.
I'll help you with that, but I can hand out my card after this. Send emails out. There's another in the back.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so the goal today is to talk about a couple things. Thank you guys for having us. Just wanted to go over, I think I mentioned to you guys, we did add Poet and Valero ethanol plants recently as of this year. So that brings us up to a total of 57 ethanol plant partners. One of those partners is Poet in Hanlon Town in Worth County. So that first map that you see there in your packet is gonna have that new route going to the west. And it adds, I believe the map says about two miles that it's gonna add in the county. So this is again gonna be on a different permitting schedule than the current route. And if you notice, there is like a light gray portion around that line. So that's gonna be the notification corridor. So we will again have to do informational meetings that are held with IUB here in Mitchell County for all the landowners that are in that notification corridor. So for anyone that is possibly a landowner in the room, just because you get an invitation to our IUB informational meeting, that doesn't necessarily mean that you're on the route. It just means that you could be considered. You know, if the parcel that we're running through right now, the person that owns that property does not want the pipeline, we may reach out to you and see if you're interested. And so that's kind of how that works. But everyone that is within that notification corridor will receive an invite to that informational meeting, which should be held in June. I believe that's what the IUB has requested. And when we get those dates, I will make sure to send out an email to all the supervisors so you have the date, time, location. And then also, again, any, any landowner that's in that gray area will receive an invitation by mail to attend those meetings. And I would really recommend attending those if you do get an invite because there's a lot of good information there. We can't actually start reaching out to landowners for acquisition until after that meeting. So there's gonna be a lot of land agents there. Both our project managers will be there. Richard, I haven't even introduced Richard, but you guys have met Richard before. He's one of our construction managers. He will probably be there. So really, anyone that you might have a question for will be at that, at that meeting. So it's really a great thing to attend. So the next couple handouts. And the next thing I wanted to talk about, unless there are any questions on that new route. Are there any questions there, or do you guys want me to kind of move into landowner payments and county benefits?
So if they're coming in from the west and going south, are you gonna have to put a bigger pipe in?
We are not. So we had originally... Now it will be feeding, I guess, two ethanol plants, but we had originally upsized the pipe, the main line, a while ago in anticipation for more partners. And so this, we did double check when we were doing the initial routing through this new line, and it will not increase the pipe size in Mitchell County. So it'll still be, I believe, six or eight? Eight inches.
Oh, it's eight inch now?
Oh, well then...
Yeah, it was six the last time.
Yeah, whatever it was originally, I'd have to...
Six is what?
I think it was six, I thought.
So it doesn't have to increase because you're adding another wrench?
I think it was four and then you upped it to six, I believe.
Six is the smallest that we will have across the entire project, so, yeah.
All right. Six or eight?
Six inch. Six inch.
Is that the Mitchell County pipe two, the one that comes from absolute?
It would be both. Both, all of the pipe in Mitchell County should be six inch.
And what's the thickness of the pipe?
It ranges. I don't have the exact number on me, but it does range based on the size of pipe.
Right, so a six inch pipe, how thick would it be?
I don't have the exact number on me.
I heard you say at a meeting, point two five.
That is the, I believe that's one of the...
It's a design factor. It's point two five, but...
Say it again?
Point two five is what we talked about as a design factor. The wall thickness of the pipe will be point two oh.
Say point two or two oh? Point, so that's less than a quarter inch?
Yep.
That's been aware pretty, corroded pretty easily.
Sure. There are gonna be protections in place. We will have the thought it protection, which will protect the pipe from corrosion. There's also an intense integrity management plan that we will follow. And there's different... FEMSA guides us on this, so for any kind of corrosion that we see, if we see it, we would go out and there would be a minimum amount of days in which it would have to be fixed. So there's continual maintenance on the pipeline.
So does that mean replacing the pipe?
Not necessarily. Maybe the FEMSA dictates. So we will have, and what our integrity management plan dictates. And that's something that will be lined up before we go into construction.
Right, but a point two, so a quarter inch pipe that has a corrosive chemical coming through, a gas, that you would anticipate, I mean, you're asking for forever easements. So my question about that is how long do you really expect a quarter inch pipe to last?
So CO2 is actually a lot less corrosive to pipe than...
But why is your interferes with that? And the ground, and minus 20 degrees is one number I see that can interfere with pipes.
There will be protections in place, like I said, through our integrity management plan. If you are very concerned about that, I would say go to FEMSA, the website, online.
Yeah, I know that they have minimum standards, but I've heard Summit say they would increase those standards. So if a quarter inch pipe is the minimum, who is Summit gonna increase that?
We are going above and beyond certain standards. For example, we're only required to x-ray 10% of the welds. We're gonna x-ray 100%. Also, our minimal depth, it's three foot is what is required. We're going at least four foot. In a lot of cases, six feet.
Six or eight feet, aren't they? Six or eight feet is what I thought the legislative would ask you for.
That may be true, but I don't think that's in law right now. So right now, the minimum depth requirement is three feet. We're going a minimum of four. If a landowner asks for six, we have done that 100% of the time. Okay, so the next couple handouts in there is talking about compensation for landowners. So a couple things I want to touch on. This gives a lot of information. I'm just gonna hit on the high points. As far as payments to landowners, we do pay to cross the easement. So when an easement is signed, when it is being negotiated, there will also be a price negotiated to cross that easement. Along with that payment would be the crop damage payment. So in addition to the easement payment, we will also pay for three years crop damage upfront. And that's gonna be 100% for year one, 80% for year two, and 60% for year three. That does not mean that, you know, five years down the line, if a farmer is still seeing yield reduction due to our pipeline, which would be, you know, pretty obvious, we wouldn't pay it. We are still willing to pay for those crop damages if there's still damage down the line. So another thing is the drain tile warranty for life. So we are contracted with Ellingson and they will be following us through construction with their teams. And they'll do the drain tile repairs. And then, you know, if somebody wants, has a local tile repair company that they would want to use, we'll also, you know, work with them as well. So that's kind of, the two main things are the easement payment and then the crop damage payment is, is what the landowner gets. As far as county benefits, I did want to talk about the, you have a page there that lists out the county tax, estimated new property taxes. And that is 1,381,000. That is an estimate, and of course, these would not start coming in until after we're in operations. And it is likely to decrease slightly over time, but if you look at counties that have DAPL in it, they're still getting a pretty substantial amount of money each year. But again, that's an estimate, but it's something that we've done for all the counties that we just kind of show. And it's based off of miles of pipe. And if there's a capture facility in the county, which this county does have a capture facility of ethanol plant. And then along with that, this isn't something that's on the handout, but I did want to bring it up for benefits to the county because I don't think we've discussed it previously. But we are doing an emergency management grant. And that will be when construction begins. So in addition to the equipment that we'll work with, the emergency manager will come up with a list of equipment that they may need. And we will purchase that for the county. Then there will be a $50,000 grant at the beginning of construction. And then $1,000 per mile on top of that will go to the emergency management department. And then I know a big thing that gets brought up because we have not started acquisition in this county. So we're kind of going off of survey permission. We are at 79% survey permission. I believe earlier in the month, we were at about 76 when I last updated you guys, but we're slowly working through that and, you know, of course, once we can get our IUB permit for the initial route, that's when we'll be able to start picking up land acquisition efforts.
So you've had survey permission in Mitchell County?
Yes, sir. 79% have granted it.
You know anybody that's... I mean, I talked to a lot of people.
Or is that reasonable?
That's based on miles.
Miles? And so we're talking about 19 miles, 20 miles?
I believe it's about 20... Well, this, this survey permission would only be on the initial route, so yeah, it's about 20 miles. Because we haven't, we cannot start survey for the new two mile route.
A lot of this pipeline goes through my district and I've talked to, boy, I don't know how many blocks. I think almost everybody in the, had to go through and I haven't gotten to do it. They've allowed survey everything. Right, but how do they survey? With a drone?
No, we'll, we'll go out physically, survey the property.
Like one guy said they were gonna fly a drone over, but other than that, I don't hear anybody.
No, so we'll, we'll send survey crews out and they'll, they'll do the property corners. Then we'll have a topo crew go out and actually survey the easement across the property.
I, I have to talk to anybody that says that.
Does this percentage include numbers from last August, when they're initially going out?
For survey permission?
Correct.
Yeah, it's specifically for Mitchell County, so yes.
And what is the compensation for landowners?
As far as easement payments?
Yeah, for the whole thing.
So I believe they start with a percentage above what the market value of the property is. I don't know the percentage. Do you remember?
This, this negotiation case by case for a landlord?
Why would that be? Everybody's land is for Mitchell County, so the cost of negotiating that dollars, easements and... That should be a set, set number, not because of who I am or my neighbor is.
So, so what it is, it is a set number that they start with, and then each negotiation is per, per landlord. Some landlord may want more compensation and some landlord may say, well, I want, you know, X instead of dollars. And that's negotiated between the railway agents and the, and the landlord.
And that's still not right, because then after the fact, we'll find out, you paid me more than my neighbor. There's a conflict there. And the other thing is a new property tax. How do you get a new property tax if we're already paying property?
So that's the property tax that we would pay for the pipeline once it's installed, it's centrally assessed.
What happens to the tax that we paid before this? That number is not correct. If you're taking that property away from me, and I don't understand that.
I am not a tax expert by any stretch of the imagination, but I can tell you from what I've heard from our tax specialists or accounting people is that your taxes should not change, but we have to pay our own taxes for the, I believe, the product in the line and then also the pipeline itself.
But with, with a hazardous product that's gonna be run through your, your property tax will go, value will go down on the property based on that pipeline with the chemicals that's going through. So the tax value on a set number does not match after it's completed because your value... And if I was to sell that ground, I would not get the same value that I would prior to this pipeline.
So I know there's a lot of opinions on that and things do change, but statistically, that is not true, that pipelines lower property value. And even in Sioux County, on a, on a parcel of land that we have already purchased an easement on, the buyer knows that we're gonna put a pipeline there, it sold for well over a million.
Right, through the installation?
Yes, but that means that they're gonna have to deal with the installation of the pipeline. And they, we're still willing to buy. You know, once the pipeline's in the ground, it's underground, you don't see it, but before construction, you know, I've argued maybe...
You know, and you mentioned, and I'll stop, but you mentioned the maintenance after it's been installed. How do you ma- maintenance that our primary underground, 7,200 volts, we have a minimum of four foot deep? If I have a tractor out there with a three foot ripper on it, it's gonna catch that bad boy.
Well, I think that's why it's important, very important to talk to your land agent and let them know what you have.
And the land, what are you talking, I don't understand that.
If you are a landlord, which I don't know if you are, I don't know, okay. So when you are assigned a land agent, because right now, you know, I stated we, we have not started acquisition efforts. But when that person is assigned to you and they reach out to you, that would be the first thing I tell them. Is, hey, I have this going on. The four foot is not gonna cut it, needs to be lowered. And like I said, 100% of the time, we've gone six foot, if that's what you would prefer. So there's a lot to be negotiated in the easement other than just dollars. You know, like what Richard said, sometimes a landlord would take, will take less dollars to have the pipe moved or have it, you know, do something different than just a larger amount of money. So it is landlord to landlord, and I mean, the best thing that we can do, because everybody's property is so different and everybody has something different that they want, is communicate. So communicating with the land agent when they reach out to you. I'm gonna hand out a bunch of my cards. I have direct communication with our project managers who have close to the overall say of what gets done. They do have higher ups, but, you know, we wanna, we wanna work with you guys. And I know there's a lot of rumors out there, but we're here to talk this part here today and we're gonna continue to do that.
Thank you.
I would just like to add in, you said twice now that you've done 100% of the time when people request it, have a pipe six feet deep. I heard from somebody in another county who signed an easement, that they wanted the pipe six foot deep, that they were pressured through Summit, through negotiations through the easement, and that Summit only allowed the pipe to be five foot deep in the easement, even though they wanted it to be six. They had to give something else up for negotiations through that, so they didn't get the initial depth that they wanted. So I'm not sure if that statement is totally true, saying that 100% of the time, we put...
Based on, you know, I, I don't know that specific landlord. I'd have to see that situation. I don't know whether that's true, what you're saying is true or not. But I do apologize if that's correct and I'm wrong, but based on what our project managers have said that have been in landowner negotiations, six foot is not a problem. But there may be a special case on that property, so...
How are the negotiations going with the Dakotas?
As far as landowners or the state permit or... As far as landowners or the state permit or?
Everything.
Um, I think, you know, from, I'm not up there, but I know that things are turning around in a positive direction. We have not resubmitted a permit in South Dakota yet. So there's really, there's not a lot going on there, there, other than outreach to, um, county officials and then working on routing and stuff at the state level. But, um, North Dakota, I think things are going pretty well. I don't know the exact percent we're at on miles acquired, but I think it's up there. I believe it is a bit higher than even Iowa is, so. And our sequestration side, I think is ninety-nine percent acquired, so.
You know, there's talk of, that's carbon, you can make methanol out of it. Might as well some pursue something like that instead of this.
So I think, and this is, at the end of the day, this is a partnership between the ethanol plant and Summit Carbon Solutions. So the ethanol plant has to choose what they're going to do with that CO2. They ultimately chose Summit Carbon Solution. So all I can tell you with that is what I have heard from the ethanol plants, which is they've looked into methanol and it's very energy intensive and it has to be green. So in order to lower their carbon intensity scores, which is the goal with this project as well. It has to be green. So they would have to have energy that is green to run that plant. And I know in Wright County where the ethanol plant said they would have to add over a hundred new windmills, um, to power that plant. So that's kind of the risk. Or I guess the, the cons outweighed the pros there.
I've heard Illinois is doing it somewhere.
Yeah, I mean, every ethanol plant has, has their choice on what they choose to do, so.
They said the methanol would be their main moneymaker, you know, come down, so.
It might be, um, but I do know that methanol is used. Well, I won't get into that because I'm not an expert on this, so I don't want to say something that.
But I've heard it's used on ships and in the ocean.
Yeah, which, and that's what I was going to go to. We're, you know, we're not very close to the ocean, you know, maybe if we're down in like Georgia or, or Louisiana or something, it would make more sense. But I think probably the, the cost of then shipping it.
Pipeline.
Yeah. Yeah. See, and that's, that's something too, is that might end up going in the pipeline as well. So I think about that.
I just have one more question. Just to clarify something I heard you say, um, earlier in the month. Was about, um, you were asked about how much water Summit would be using at each ethanol plant. And, um, you mentioned ten percent increase for the ethanol plant itself. And so for absolute energy, that would be about thirty-nine million gallons increased per year. And then what Jimmy Powell had said was that it would be between, that Summit itself separate from the ethanol plant would use between twenty and a hundred gallons per minute for their, um, ethanol project or for their Summit Carbon Solutions. So I think that would amount to, um, well, be eighty-six thousand, four hundred every day of additional gallons just for the Summit permit. And which would become thirty-one, five hundred and thirty-six million in a year, but do that for a year long. So then the total becomes, um, thirty-one, five seventy-five million gallons of water. So I guess the, so when you said the increase of ten percent, I was surprised the ethanol plant would have to increase their water use. And that's thirty-nine million gallons of our aquifer.
So the, the capture facility will be located at the ethanol plant. So it becomes part of the ethanol plant. And that's why they would have to increase their usage for those cooling towers. What I can tell you is that the majority of that water will be recycled and we have to get a permit from the D N R.
So how do you recycle it?
That's dictated by our permit through the D N R.
Well, what I saw in one of the articles was that it was released into a creek.
That, I would say that it's different for each ethanol plant based on where it's located, on where it is gathered and where the water is gathered and then where it's recycled.
Well, there were some concerns about the chemicals that would be in the water that was released.
So again, we have to go through a step-by-step process that the D N R helps us put together on how it's recycled and how, you know, the D N R's not going to allow chemicals of potash to go into the water after it.
Which would mean it has to be captured before it goes into the creeks or something.
I'm not exactly sure of the process, but I do know that we have to go through the D N R, not only to get the water, but then also on the, on the recycling.
Right, but if you're recycling a million gallons at a time or whatever would be a number, four hundred million. I'm, I'm just concerned about the quality of the water after this project.
Yeah, there's a lot more I can give you there, other than we do have to go through the D N R to get a permit and there are steps for the recycling of it. And not all of it will be recycled, but from my understanding, the majority will.
You haven't got any permits anywhere you have yet?
At the state level, no, we have not. Um, at the county level, yes, we have. We've required quite a few, um, road crossing and driveway permits through counties. Uh, but ultimately we have to have a state permit to construct. So those are kind of null and void until we get a state permit. But, and right now, I think there's really no timeline on the I U B's decision for our current permit that's gone through the hearings. It could be. I think people are speculating April or May, so. But they were speculating March, so. We'll see.
I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
What explanation might you have for this main line being a main line? And there's, um, that hasn't even been permitted. And yet we're adding on extensions to this instead of why doesn't, why isn't Summit making this one project so that we can look at the cumulative environmental impact to the state? So that we can see the cumulative amount of water that's being taken, so we can see the cumulative economic impact. What, what is Summit's intention of doing it this way?
Well, that, it's kind of just how things have fallen. You know, we made our initial agreements or partnerships with the first thirty or so ethanol plants. Um, Navigator, I believe, previously had Poet and Valero. And then they canceled their project. And so, you know, certainly if we could have had all of these in the beginning, we would have rather done that, but that's just not how it, the things go into place. So, um, what we have to do then is work off of our main line um, to get to these new ethanol plants that have now signed, um, partnerships with us.
But even the, the new ethanol plants aren't put into one project, they're all separate. And also, um, when you go to get your water permit, you're doing each water permit separately instead of looking at the entire project. And that's even on the main line. And it's making it, it's, it's very undermining to the people of the state because we cannot see the impact to the state. The state is under a three-year going on four-year drought. And we're having little LLCs going around trying to pull water permits. And it's, it's kind of unnerving to see, uh, that we don't really have a good grasp on how this is going to impact the water resources for the state. And I just want to kind of understand why, because as stakeholders, it seems like it's very undermining to us.
So it's, I guess that's kind of a two-part question there. Um, as far as the new laterals, each having their own permit through the I U B, that's, I believe, what was required. Um, so each new lateral had to have its own docket number. Um, if that's, I think that's what you were referring to in, in the beginning. It does make it a little confusing, trust me. I've been going, I've been going through it, uh, trying to memorize those numbers for what plant is what number, but, um, that's how we were required to put it in, from my understanding. Um, if those can be merged, that's something that, that the I U B will do. And we, we don't have control over that, from my understanding. As far as the water permits, I believe those are being submitted or requested from the D N R per capture facility. And that is not my, I'm not an expert in that part of it because I don't work with capture facility a lot, but that's my understanding is that we're requesting them per capture facility. So per ethanol.
So you're saying, so you, so you're saying that when, um, the main line was going through and then we put on the absolute extension that at that time, um, Summit was not able to pull that application permit and modify it and resubmit with the whole project? Because you're, you're saying it's all, it's all on the I U B, that Summit has no discretion on how they do this?
I'm not a hundred percent sure, because I see what you're saying with the abs, because the absolute route was just submitted, I guess, last June or July, I believe. And then now we have this two mile, so why didn't we go back and make it all one? I don't know the answer to that. That, it does seem like that would have been an easier thing to do, but I'm assuming there's a reason why we couldn't. Um, I can try to figure out what, what that answer is.
And even if there has to be individual water permit, you're saying that the I U B or the D N R is requiring that? Why isn't there a comprehensive, a comprehensive analysis being done for the state? Either by Summit independently, there's nothing right now that I've seen that is showing anything how this is going to comprehensively impact the state. And it's, it's very, you know, it's very nervy.
So I want to clarify, I, I, if I said that the D N R is requiring us to, um, submit the permits that way, I, I did not mean to, because I'm not sure if they are requiring us. I just believe that is the way it is being done. And to me, that just seems like it would be better organization to have each capture facility. Cause they're all going to be using different amounts of water based on how large the ethanol plant is. So it's not going to be just some across the board. This is how much water for every ethanol plant.
But, uh, uh, overall, this is supposed to be a benefit to the public as well. And if the public is searching for water just to survive or searching for water to grow crops, which is an economic issue, then, uh, it, it's not really in the end, end game going to be a benefit.
So that's why we have the D N R. The D N R is the regulatory body for our water usage. We do believe that this is a, a benefit for the state of Iowa and for the Midwest because we are lowering the carbon intensity scores at the ethanol plant, which is something that they have to do in order to stay profitable into the future. If they can do this, it's going to get them a premium for their ethanol. You're going to maintain a higher price of corn. And then, you know, now we have the option to move into sustainable aviation fuel. Which, if you listen to my other, um, presentation in Worth County, you probably heard me say that right now we have one sustainable aviation fuel plant in America. And from my understanding, and that is in Georgia. And they are importing the ethanol or, yeah, the ethanol from Brazil because it's low carbon. We have tons of ethanol plants up here, fifty-seven, you know, that are going to be hooked onto this project that could be creating that low carbon ethanol and giving it to an S A F plant here that brings more jobs. Um, and lots of economic benefit to the state of Iowa specifically. So that's, I mean.
Right, but these are ver, these are very water-intensive, energy-intensive projects. I mean, we're looking at the take from the ethanol plants is already large, then the take from the, um, for the carbon capture. And then just additional operational costs. We don't even know the entire impact of what this is going to drain on the Midwest for water. So I just, those are just concerns of mine and I just don't feel like there's any real answers. And the D N R, yeah, I understand that that's their, their responsibility, but so far they, they haven't held up to that because they issued, uh, one water permit in Lawler and didn't even do any environmental study and didn't even really understand what was going on. And we don't even know if the, the people who own the property are the first people taking the permit. So there's a lot of questions that are going around and I, and I understand that you only have that part of it, but there's, there's broader concerns.
Yeah, I, I mean, I hate to say this, to say the same thing again, but you know, all I can say is that the D N R is the regulatory body for that. And I think, you know, I know a lot of people have, have, um, spoken to the D N R and probably written letters, but that's, I, we are not the person to talk to, uh, about that.
Right, but you, you're, you, you say these other people are going to, um, you know, well, it's not our responsibility, it's this. And I'm just saying that that's not, that's not always there either, so.
Well, it is, it is our responsibility to submit a permit for that water usage to the D N R. And have that, you know, hopefully get that permit accepted, but the D N R again is the regulatory body. So they have their regulations that we have to follow. And we, it's our responsibility to follow those.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else have any comments, questions? Well, thank you very much, I guess.
Thank you.
You have nothing else? Thank you.
I did have a chat question. So, question for Summit represented, why is your proposed pipeline from Poet in Hamlet Town going east and connect to Mitchell County Spur Pipeline rather than route directly south to connect to your main pipeline that runs south of Mason City and Clear Lake?
That is a very good question because that was our initial route. Um, because that was the quickest and easiest way to get to that plant in Hamlet Town. But when you look at that route, what we would have to do is cut straight through Mason City and Clear Lake. While we do not believe that pipelines deter growth, we've seen from our phase one of this project that a lot of people disagree. And it's been a contentious, um, discussion. So we chose to take the route, um, from Mitchell to Worth County rather than cutting straight through Clear Lake and Mason City, because I think we can all agree that, that those two are kind of expanding into one. So we, we're trying to learn from our previous mistakes and, and avoid a conflict with that, with this route is the answer to that question.
So the easier way to plant, there's less, less people going east than there is going south?
Well, uh, I mean, that might be the way that some people look at it, but to us it was, how can we take past lessons learned? Because again, like I said, we don't see any issue going through that area. We don't think it's going to deter growth. We don't think it's any kind of safety issue because like I said, we have, I've said it before, you know, safety is, is a big thing with us. And also we're going to have our integrity management plan, so. If it was ultimately up to us and we hadn't had previous issues, um, in the past with people really disliking those routes that go close to communities like that. We would have chosen that route, but we know the reaction that we're surely to get and we want to avoid that conflict if we can. So that's why we chose, what we chose.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Discussing possible action on car gas ten?
Okay, these are change order requests in regards to our HVAC system that we're doing at the jail. Change order request number ten has to do with the, um, focus here. In order to go to the attic, the original plans called for a, uh, pull down ladder to, to have access to go, go up into the attic of the jail. There's a lot of, uh, air handling units of, they're not air handling, there's D O S unit, big things up there, so. The, it has been determined that it would be more beneficial to actually have a vertical ladder that goes to the ceiling tiles and then stop at the ceiling tiles, then above the ceiling tiles, another three-foot extension that would go up into the attic. And so that's, that's, it just has to be documented. There's no cost change in regards to this change order request, but it, but it has to be documented that we're going to go to change. So, uh, that is change, authoric, change authorization request number ten. So, uh, that is change authori, change authorization request number ten.
Please, you have a motion for change order authorization request number ten?
I'll make a motion.
The motion is our second. Any other discussion?
Broke all, Mark?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Cindy?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
Todd?
Aye.
All right, we'll move on to discussion and possible action on change authorization request number eleven?
Okay, this has to do with exit lights that are going to be installed. There will be four of them will be installed. One will be if you are in the boiler room. Power goes out, you're down in the mechanical room, the boiler room. There will be an exit light at the door, above the door of the boiler room that shows you how to get out of the boiler room. From there, there will be, as you go through the mechanical room, there will be an exit light above the door of the mechanical room that shows you how to get out of the mechanical room. Once you get out of the mechanical room, you're in the stair, stairway entrance or area. There will be a exit light. As you open that door, there will be another exit light that you're seeing right in front of you that has an arrow that says, take a right, go up the stairs this way to get out. Once you get up to the top of the stairs, there will be an exit light above the, there's two doors at that landing. One goes into the building, the other one goes outside. There will be an exit light above the outside door that says, exit, get out of the door this way. So there's, there's four of them. The, the price is one thousand nine hundred and fifty-eight dollars. That includes the four exit lights, conduit to, uh, uh, house, all the wiring for it. The wiring and, uh, making it all happen.
I, I know this has to be done, but it's kind of like, the engineer should have figured that in when he was doing it, you know, exit lights and exits, you know?
Yeah, that, that, that's a good thought. The, the thing is, is that this was, this was something that's over and above the project. The original project concept was to put a heating system in the, in the jail. And this is probably not the heating system. This is just something that we felt is a good thing to do in order for safety wise. So it got incorporated into the project.
Yeah, they weren't there originally either, so we're not showing them there.
Yep.
But when the building was built, now when it's being remodeled, it's a, it's a neither thing.
Yeah, it's, it should be there. Yeah.
I think this is a reasonable charge for this.
From prices I've seen, I do, yeah. I guess, you know, when you think of just putting exit lights up, that doesn't seem too much. But then, you know, every, all the wiring needs to be in conduits. So they're going to have to run conduits to all these locations and wire it, pull the wire, hook it.
I don't know if the labor's in on that. The,
Yeah, twelve hundred dollars of it is labor. So that's the bulk of the cost.
Probably reasonable.
I think it is reasonable. I mean, this, stuff just costs a lot anymore, I guess, but.
Well, I'll make a motion for, for change order number eleven?
The motion is our second.
Second.
We'll see, second, any other discussion?
Broke all, Jim?
Aye.
Cindy?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Todd?
Aye.
Motion passed. Discussion and possible action on Midwest Engineering Associates paid request invoice number eighty-five, eighty-seven?
Midwest Engineering Associates is the consulting firm, engineering design firm that designed the system and is, uh, doing all of the inspection and contract administration. So, uh, as you see in front of you, there's, uh, certain aspects of the project that have reached a hundred percent completion on their part as far as what they're supposed to do. Uh, the last two parts of it is contract administration, first construction administration, and then at the very end, closeout. This is another ten percent of construction administration and amounts to a dollar amount of three thousand three hundred and ninety-seven dollars and seventy cents.
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve of this. Midwest Engineering Associates pay request number eighty-five, eighty-seven?
Your motion is our second? Our second. Any other discussion? None?
Broke all, Todd?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Cindy?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
Number eleven, meetings attended.
Uh, I went to the, uh, Attorney General was in the, in the town. He was tracking my date, which day it was anyway. Which day was it?
Thursday.
Thursday. Okay. And we were at the seminary. Uh, she came and spoke with, uh, the people in attendance. There were, there, I will say this, there were a quorum supervisors there, but we all kept our mouths shut. We did not do discussions. So we didn't violate any open meetings law because of no agenda. We just listened. Uh, she was, uh, a lot of the conversation basically was between, uh, the sheriff and the county attorney. And naturally, because she's the state attorney general, uh, was between them. So it was very informative and she, it was very informative.
I attended the same meeting and it was, as Jen said, very good. She was very pleasant and I, I enjoyed talking to her after the meeting, always from everybody else. And that was, I don't know.
I attended the Attorney General meeting also. Yeah, that was very informative. And I had a Central Island Juvenile Detention Center meeting last Friday. And pretty much routine, so there's some discussion on, needed alternate, uh, for the personnel board. Somebody's gone. Quite a discussion on maybe putting solar down there. So we're just going to be looking into that. They had a couple quotes from a couple solar companies, so. That'd probably be a good fit.
Where was that at, Mike?
At Eldora.
At Eldora?
The Juvenile Detention Center, yeah.
Seven years, okay.
Yeah, because their electricity's going like fifteen hundred a month.
Oh.
Yeah, so the solar will pay for itself in probably five years, but it sounded so, it's probably a good thing. And, uh, we had a North Iowa Community Action Board meeting also. I don't know, it was, went over some statistics, like the WIC, there's twenty-seven hundred and nine cases of people using WIC, which is thirteen percent higher from a year ago. Early childhood grants, they got two hundred and six students enrolled in that currently and all the heating assistance for this winter. They spent two million two hundred and eight thousand on heating assistance, which helped four thousand nine hundred and eighty-six houses. This, all this stuff is available in Mitchell County too. And I don't know how many people in Mitchell County actually use this, but they have assistance for utilities, heat, all that kind of stuff. And I think Mitchell County is one of the low-end users of this, so let's get the word out, if anybody needs assistance, it's in Mason City, you can call and go there. Uh, North Iowa Community Action Center. And the CEO got a four percent raise for the year too. That was approved. That was the meeting I had.
I attended the seminary also for that meeting and an Iowa workforce meeting. We had, uh, they got that new provider for the adult, dislocated work and youth. Or so that's, and help out. Had a county social service meeting, a April benefit specialist lady retired and they're looking for a new one there. And the service coordinator also, uh, I didn't know that, so. Service coordinator?
I had a FMCE de-cat meeting. Finalized the year twenty-four financials. Talked about the HHS realignment, there isn't much going on. There are directors working on some community planning for kids and movies and different areas. And then I also had a, um, MCEDC meeting, um, to the executive directors report and assistants report. Um, just did some discussion on the construction loan program. That's all it was, was discussion. And, uh, we, uh, approved the MCEDC grant agreement. And talked about the ROF, uh, regenerative food processing, no action was done on that. That's it.
Mineral management plan update?
John Kurtzbeck Finisher, forty-eight ninety-five Ocean Avenue, Stacyville. PL Farm LLC, twenty-nine forty-two State Line Street, McIntyre. Jack's Dairy Incorporated, eleven thirty-one, six hundred and twenty-second Avenue, Adams. Minnesota and Hoberson Finisher, forty-eight thirty, Epic Avenue, Sandston.
Uh, any public comments?
Well, I'm just bringing up the issue of the water concern again.
Yep.
So she was talking about the statewide numbers when we were talking of four hundred and seventy-eight million gallons. But even Mitchell County on the Farm Bureau paper, it showed that Mitchell County was the, the most affected by drought this past year. Um, in terms of cornmeal, I think it was. Um, so now this plan that they're putting forth, this ethanol plant and the Summit Carbon would take thirty-one million five hundred and seventy-five gallons of water. So thirty-one thousand five hundred and seventy-five gallons of water, millions of gallons of water in one year from our ethanol plant. I just wonder where that water's going to come from. Do you, any, do you have a concern about the water?
All right, I do. All right. I have a concern. There's a factory in Austin. I don't mention any names. But they had to shut down a few weeks ago because the city water supply was running low. And they had to go in the factory and replace every dripping faucet, leaking valve, or whatever, before they could start up again. So Austin's not very far away from the state line. And the city of Austin's running short on water.
And probably more counties low and.
Yeah, I mean, they couldn't put enough water out for this factory to, to run. So now they got all the leaks fixed. I haven't heard anything yet, other than I know everybody had Monday off here, well, three weeks ago.
Should we be promoting conservation of water? Is that something that towns should be doing?
That's what they did there. They went in there and told me fix every leaking valve and, you know, I mean, they didn't have a choice. I do know that. Yeah, I think there's.
I know my rain barrel emptied three times last summer and the summer before. I don't think it emptied once, but, you know, so there's less rain.
Yes. We just got some now, which is good.
Right.
For lunch.
Any other public comment?
Nothing?
I thought we'll adjourn the meeting at nine thirty-two.